Thanks for coming tonight. It's October the 2nd and the L.A.-Tha School Board meeting. And you are here in spite of it being the Royals playoff game tonight. So, thank you very much.
It starts till 8:00, so we'll be home by then.
No pressure. Wait, we got the pregame.
8:07, Madam President, it starts.
We'll set a record. Okay. Would you like to do a roll call, Joy?
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Sheer?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we'll kick off the evening with a food service presentation with Mr. Scott Kingery. We just enjoyed some of your food. Thank you for dinner.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, good evening. We were here back in January and gave more of an overview of the Food Services Division and just briefly touched on some of the regulations that we anticipated becoming effective in July. Well, they are now effective and we've adjusted our menus so that they are compliant. So, this evening Nicole Burnett, who is our Nutrition Coordinator and does all of our menu planning, is going to go over more of the detail of what those regulations are and how our menus have been adjusted. I think the very best way to really understand what our menus are now and how they've changed is just to give it a try. And that was why we provided samples this evening for the convenience of the Board and others in the building to be able to taste some of these new items that we have on the menu. There, in addition to those samples, we also provided everyone here with one of our new cookies. The cookies that we've served in the past don't meet the new regulations, but this cookie is a whole grain, reduced fat, reduced sugar, no trans fat, chocolate chip cookie, which that's part of the challenge. It doesn't sound good, but I think you all agree that it is a tasty cookie. And that's really a good example of the way our menus have changed. They taste a little bit different because we've had to do some modifications, but they still taste very good. Now, because of the changes that we've had to make, of course, we're interested in whether that was going to change any participation of our kids. Right now, we don't have a lot of data. We just pulled September data yesterday afternoon and right now compiling that and taking a closer look to see if we can determine any trends. But really, we'll probably have to be looking at October data as well. So, what I'm going to mention here is based on the first two weeks of school, which is really too small, the sampling, to draw any real participation trends from, especially the first two weeks. But at the elementary level, we did see a reduction in participation. And I think a lot of that is just the number of new items that we have on the menu that are unfamiliar. And as we all know, kids, especially of that age, are a little bit hesitant or reluctant to try new foods. So, there's a bit of a learning curve or maybe a tasting curve that we're going to have to work through to give the kids an opportunity to taste those things and then decide if they really like it or not. We, again, this year, are dealing with a lot of substitutions on our menu due to supplies not being adequate with our vendors. I don't understand why nationwide schools start at the same time every year, but so many of our food suppliers aren't ready for that volume. And we're, to this day, still being shorted on some products that are on our menus. Price increase, I think that might have a little bit to do with our participation decline. As you know, we've raised meal prices for the last few years. And while I still think lunch is a great value for those families that are struggling, it might be something that they're taking a look at and deciding to pack the lunch instead of having the convenience of eating at school. And as you're aware, those price increases is no longer a local decision for us to make. USDA requires us to put, use a calculator that they have online that we enter our cost and price data. Then that tells us what that price increase has to be. At the secondary level, our combo meals, we actually saw an increase. And we believe that's probably due to some of the à la carte sales shifting over to the combo meals. À la carte sales have gone down, at least in that two-week period. Not unexpected. I and other Kansas City area directors fully expecting an initial decline in sales and hoping that that will rebound to a certain point. But part of that is due to our menu structure. Because we no longer have an à la carte menu and a combo meal menu, it's more blended. The way those items are presented in the serving areas of the cafeteria, we believe that there were some students that came in looking for a certain item that they've always eaten and they didn't find it. It was there, they just didn't find it because we're offering it in a little different location and a different manner. So, they came in, didn't find what they wanted, and left without making the purchase. And then again, some of their favorites are different. The chocolate chip cookie, again, it's a good cookie, but it's different. And there are things that we simply had to take off the menu that we couldn't reduce the portion size or modify the nutritional content to a point that it would meet the regulations. And again, substitutions certainly affect à la carte sales. There are a number of items right now that we just can't keep in stock in order to allow the students to choose that. Another added challenge is just the negative misinformation that's out there in the media, whether it's national, local, or social media. There's just a lot of bad information floating around. And this slide is an example of the social media issue. The photo on the left is a picture that a high school student took, sent it to his mother and said, "We serve this to him, calling it taco pizza that was disgusting and inedible." Well, the mother chose to post it on her Facebook page, sharing all of that and saying, "Is this the best they can do?" Well, I'm here to say, "No, we do it much better than that and we would never serve something that looked like that." What it looks like is the photo on the right. That's our taco pizza. Many of you tasted that this evening. It's a whole grain crust topped with refried black beans, two kinds of cheese, and baked. And then we offer that with shredded lettuce and salsa. So, you see on the left, apparently a student had scraped the black beans off, and then that's what the photo is of. But there's just so much of that out there that I think has a negative effect on our participation. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Nicole so she can get into more of the detail of the regulations and what she has done to change our menus to be in compliance.
Okay. Thank you. As you mentioned, we're putting into place the new regulations. So, this is kind of the rollout, one of the stages of the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act. So, we're stepping through those still. One of those is also the All Foods Sold in Schools. Our Smart Snacks, Competitive Food Guidelines, they go by quite a few different names. And so, those are both what's up on your screen right now. What's on the left is last year's guidelines. What's on the right are what just started in July. So, I want to take first a look at the first two items, the sodium and the whole grain-rich that predominantly affect the combo meals. As a district, we have been looking at our food items and changing little by little for the last few years to make sure that we're within the sodium guidelines. We were within those new sodium guidelines last year, all year long. We have increased the number of items that we had that were whole grain-rich and were way above the 50%, not quite to the 100% that started this year. So, we still had a little ways to go. As Scott alluded to, some of the challenges, we didn't anticipate. We thought those two would be a fairly smooth transition simply because our students were adjusting gradually into this. What happened was vendors changed their products, discontinued some of them we were using. So, we've had to identify new things. Sometimes we didn't get a choice on what was identified. It was identified for us because that was the only product available that met the guidelines. So, some challenges just in that way for those two things. It's been a bit confusing to some of our students and frustrating to our staff to have made some of those transitions and know that these kids were enjoying their meals and then we had to change. So, the second part of that that I want to talk about tonight is the à la carte guidelines. The All Foods Sold in School affect vending, fundraisers, and then à la carte for us in food service. And so, as you can see, before this year, we didn't have any guidelines. There were no restrictions for what was sold on à la carte fundraising or vending. It's pretty much what the students were asking for, kind of supply and demand. Now, we have a fairly restrictive list of requirements that we need to follow. I put just a few of them up there. One of the challenges and one of the differences between the guidelines that food services always followed for National School Lunch Program is that those are an average over the week. So, we have a range for calories. We have a range for sodium. Unfortunately, these are on each individual item. So, while I might have a whole meal or even just an entree that has a protein and a grain in it that can meet those standards, when I take them apart, they don't necessarily individually meet the standards. And so, that's been a bit of a challenge. And if you are a PTO president or a principal and you're trying to figure out vending and fundraisers this year, you can understand completely what I'm talking about, about how hard it is to find products that meet some of these. For tonight, I'm going to kind of stay over in the secondary area because they've seen the most significant change. We don't offer an extensive à la carte menu at our elementaries. So, most of their changes were what he was talking about, in differences in items that we have on the menu. Not a lot different items like the secondary is faced with. So, I want you to see kind of what this looks like on our menu. And I apologize, I know this is really small font, but I want those side by side so it's easier to compare last year and this year. I picked two menu days from a high school that had similar entrees. So, the burrito bowl is now called the fajita bowl this year. So, it is the same exact item and that's what the picture in the corner is of. Yeah, the only name changed because of confusion and part of... Well, if you've gone to a local restaurant and you've heard of the burrito bowl, you kind of thought our students might have. That was a little confusing. They kept asking us for tortillas every time they came through the line. So, even though they were selecting it and seemed to enjoy it, they weren't quite getting what we had in mind for that. So, that's the reason for that. What you'll see on here is anything that's in blue is actually the same as the previous year. Anything that's in black is new for this year. So, you can see a few things have changed. One of those, we are allowing them a little more flexibility and choice, starting at the middle school level. We allow them to choose their grain side this year. Our elementaries still have their protein and grain combined together, but thought this might be a way for them, as they get older, to make some choices. So, middle schoolers have two grain choices each day and high schoolers have three. This allows for a lot more flexibility in how you eat something. So, for instance, they could choose the ham, cheese, and veggie cup. They can choose to eat it that way. They can choose to go through the salad bar and get whatever lettuce or other veggies they'd like to put it with. They can wrap it up in the tortilla that's their grain side. They can eat it with a bag of Cool Ranch Doritos. It's more of a choice. In the past, we'd received students' concerns or complaints about, "Well, on Monday, I can eat my hamburger with chips, but on Tuesday, I have to eat my hamburger with pasta. It's the same hamburger. Why do I have to switch just because it's Monday, or Tuesday, instead of Monday?" So, it's that type of concern that was coming from our students that we were trying to address and make those changes. On other days, you'll see things like, instead of having spaghetti and meatballs on the menu, we'll have meatballs in marinara sauce. The two of the options would be a hoagie bun and pasta. So, they could certainly still have their spaghetti and meatballs, but they could also have a meatball sub if that's what they felt like that day. So, that's where some of that flexibility comes in and some of those choices. You'll also notice we have a new entree on this one. We have more entrees on the new menu than last year. The chicken enchiladas has gotten so far some pretty good reviews at our secondary levels. They like a little more spice to theirs. And it's a green enchilada sauce that's on top of that. We'll talk a little bit in the next slide about the yogurt and pretzel entree, so I won't talk too much about it. So, the only other thing I would add is something that doesn't actually reflect in these menus is the concept of having some kind of seasonal item appear so that we can change when the weather changes and we can offer some things and then see some variety throughout the year. Because nine months of eating the same menu over and over again, we know can get a little boring. So, we want them to have some choices. So, we're looking at different soups in a bread bowl as one example. We've already introduced, we've had uncrustable sandwiches for quite a while, but putting them together in one package as a meal, so you can go into the cafeteria, grab that, and go right through the line, made it much simpler and was quite popular. We sold out of them at one of our middle schools in the first line, the first day they offered it. So, the other three lines didn't get it that day. So, obviously, a popular item and may not be a seasonal one now that we know how popular it is. Okay. So, before we look at what the à la carte menu looks like, I want you to kind of see what the students see when they walk into the café and some of the things that they've expressed concerns with. As you can, these are two of the items that we've had some more concerns about or a little more vocal from the students. The first one is this year's and last year's pizza. The one on the left is the Big Daddy Pizza. Big Daddy is a frozen pizza that we baked, but it comes as a round pizza that we cut up. On the right is the vendor pizza. It's Domino's Smart Slice. Both of those are cheese pizza. As you can see, there is a little bit of size difference. And we did have to increase the price because one was, because the new one is a vendor pizza. It does cost a little bit more, so the price was increased. But I think the significant change or what we're seeing the sale decrease from is probably the taste. So, if you think about what a whole grain crust, reduced sodium, tomato sauce or marinara sauce, and reduced fat, reduced sodium cheese, it's probably not going to be what you had in mind based on what you've eaten out as a cheese pizza. So, a little more on that side. On the right side are the five-ounce pretzel and nacho cheese packet that we offered last year on à la carte and the new two-ounce pretzel that's offered on à la carte and on the combo meals. We are still working. We knew that there would be challenges. We knew they'd be shocked when they saw the difference in pretzels. We didn't even put them in our pretzel machines for that reason because they look a little small compared to what they were used to walking in and seeing. So, certainly knew that was coming. And the nacho cheese packet has created quite a stir. The lack of having that has really been an issue for many of our students. So, we have been working on some other dips and other things that they can combine. One of those would be to make it a combo meal by adding or by combining it with a yogurt, giving students who have never eaten à la carte and have never been able to even have the small soft pretzel before an opportunity to enjoy the soft pretzel as part of that meal. Okay. So, now, I'll show you. This is the à la carte menu. This is last year's. And just briefly look at it. And then I want to show you what it looks like today. Again, font colors are demonstrating the difference between the two menus. The items in blue are the ones that are the same as last year. So, still significant number of those did not change. But as Scott mentioned, the way we've set up our café this year makes a little bit of the difference. And we are, some of our students probably don't even know. Some of these are still available because of the new looks. The black font are the things that are no longer available. All of those are because of the guidelines. None of the, no other reason other than the fact that we could not figure out a way to qualify them. And then the purple indicates something that is new this year. So, a few more beverages, a couple more side options. But the main difference, as Scott was talking about, is the way that we divide up our entrees is different. So, instead of having one à la carte entree each day, it changed. We had an à la carte line they went through. They had that one and they had one of the combo meal entrees next to it. Now, we divide up our six entrees between the two lines. It evens out the lines a lot more. You can go to either line. You look to see what's in this line. That doesn't sound good. Go to the other one. And then you can make a choice from those three or four items that are over there. So, a little bit different way to go through the line. Part of that was to kind of see how we could cushion the blow of what these guidelines might do to our revenues. But one of the concerns that had been brought to us by our managers at our secondary levels was the idea that our middle and high school students were choosing not to eat or mostly because they couldn't afford to eat or to purchase an à la carte meal or entree. But they were not willing to leave their social group, their peers, their friends, who were going through that side of the line. It takes a lot to admit that you are a free student and you have to go to the combo line. And many of our students were not doing that. So, we wanted to give them an opportunity to not have to identify themselves and to be able to go through either line, choose that combo meal, and not have to have that pressure put upon them. So, that was a nice outcome that has really, I think, part of the reason that we have an increase in our combo meals because we have students who wouldn't have purchased anything from us and chosen not to eat because of that. A couple of other things. We have worked with the L.A.-Tha Northwest e-Communication students and produced a video to talk about what the changes are and to show the students what these advantages might be to them. Wanted it from a student perspective so that they saw that they were students speaking to students. And we hope that that helps the students kind of adjust and see how that new look might be an advantage. Another thing to point out, I don't think Scott mentioned it anyway, was our middle school is significantly more impacted than our high schools are in this particular guidelines. We saw a lot of sales for the sports drinks and the flavored waters, the vitamin water-type water, Gatorade, Propel in particular. And so, we know that that's part of the reason that our sales are down at those particular schools. And hopefully, offering a couple new options. They have two different smoothie options at those schools as well as the other six or seven that we had last year and still have, that eventually they'll come back to us and start purchasing a few more of those. The other thing I would say is manufacturers change their products all the time, come out with new ones. And we've already started to see some come out even this last few weeks that meet these new guidelines. It just took them a little longer than what we would have liked and what they would have liked to get those ready. So, we're certainly looking at some new items to add to this that meet some of these questions and concerns that are coming from the students. A few of their requests certainly have been... What surprised me a little bit, oatmeal was a request three, four times from four or five different managers. I got requests for oatmeal last year. So, that's, to me, that was a great thing for them to be asking for. So, certainly will appear on our à la carte menu. You noticed beef jerky was not available. That's an extremely popular choice because it's portable and it's an easy thing to purchase and eat as a snack before you go to your sports practice after school. So, those types of things we're looking at. They do have a couple items that we're looking at. Some trail mixed kind of things also would be another example of that. The pizza bosco would be another one that we're hearing a lot of. Where's it at? Because it was offered every week last year and it was a favorite of many of our students. I was quite surprised when I stood behind the line at one of our high schools and how fast a pan of pizza boscos can go. So, certainly not, although that product does not qualify. They have created a few new products and so we're looking at testing those. We'll be testing those and salsa cups with our middle and high schools students in the next couple of weeks. We've had some products coming in to do that sampling. So, we're excited to be able to at least try out some new things and get some new offerings. With that, I think we're ready for questions? Questions?
Not even questions, but I had, I can tell you that I had a focus group of three sixth-grade boys that I dropped off at football on the way here. So, I asked them, and they're all three linemen, so they enjoy eating. Asked them what their three favorites were. And specifically, the spicy chicken sandwich. And I didn't even know we offered these things, but they knew exactly by name, the Swedish meatballs and then the pizza. And basically, in that order.
I'd ordered, yeah. Yeah. I can't say I'm surprised about spicy chicken. That one is across the board. As soon as they get to middle school, it is a high favorite for a lot of them as well. Pizza, Swedish meatballs is new this year, so I'm happy to hear that.
You probably said it, but the reason for like reducing the size of the pretzel is that to meet the new guidelines?
Yeah. Yeah. It's about two and a half is what our old pretzel was. So, yeah. It wasn't, last year's wasn't whole grain. They do offer different sizes that are whole grain, but then we couldn't meet the sodium and fat guidelines. Then we went up to even another ounce.
Be curious, what sort of a process did you put in place to allow the free and reduced to go through the line without being recognized?
Every art or secondary's, they bring their card through and scan. So, there's no identifiable in that way. Whether or not a student is a paid student or a free and reduced student, they would still be suggested that they add a fruit or vegetable to make the combo meal just because we know it's healthier and we prefer that that's what they chose as a healthier option.
For the disgruntled students, did they know the reason why the changes are being made?
Yeah, that's, I don't know, a silver lining? I don't know. In the past, you know, we get a lot of feedback from students and it's not always positive. And it's always about what we have done. And the concerns now are about government regulations. And so, they know very clearly why the changes are happening.
And one other question, you told us what's not in the cookie. Can you tell us what's in it?
Whole grain and chocolate.
Okay.
I've been hearing that there's waste because of suggesting adding things that the kids wouldn't necessarily choose to have on their plate. What are we, are we experiencing a lot of waste?
I think that's, again, one of those media issues. You know, last year, when regulations changed where all students had to have a certain amount of fruits or vegetables on their tray, there was a significant amount of waste. The regulation changes that were, that have changed our menus this year really have not impacted that. I've seen the same reports and read those things. And they're talking about the regulations that went into effect last year with the fruits and vegetables. And while we saw a large amount of waste at that time, it subsided and I think is at an acceptable level.
I would just add that allowing the students to taste some of the fruits and vegetables, in majority of them, I guess I will say. Not all cases, they actually will choose it again. Unfortunately, our students aren't exposed to some of the foods that we would consider common in our menus. Certainly, I would have thought cucumber slices were a common item that they would have tasted before. But we had a second grader who this last year asked their lunch aid what those circle items with the green on the outside were. He didn't know what they were, but they tasted really good. So, it's kind of the idea of introducing them and figuring out ways to get them to accept. Or maybe we change the form so that it is a little more acceptable to that particular age group. Sometimes elementary students will like something and the secondaries will not touch it. All it takes is, oh, well, if we cook it instead of give it to raw, then all of a sudden, they'll like it. I would say also the elementaries allow, a lot of them allow a share table for that reason so that students that do enjoy some of those items are able to go to the share table and select those instead of throwing them in the trash. Great. Anything else?
I have one other question, just on the, it's probably more with the students of senior high. Did they know the daily requirements of sodium, sugar, or any of those? Is any of that ever... Is any of that ever disclosed to them? Because there's a lot of talk today about obesity and reduction of sugar. Do they know what those drinks are? They know what those foods are?
Yeah, my guess is, of course, we would provide the information, we provide the information on the website if they're interested in health classes and, and those types of, um, ways to access that information, they could. It probably depends on the level of interest, whether or not that's something, but I wouldn't say a majority of our students have any idea what's in the menu compared to what they're supposed to have.
Well, I enjoyed dinner, thank you.
Scott, can I ask a question about the, you referenced USDA, uh, US, was it USDA requirements on price setting?
Mm-hmm.
When did that happen?
Um, gosh, that was four years ago, I believe. Um, in, in the past, we would determine what the price needed to be based on our costs. Um, but now it's, um, it's, the purpose of it is to, um, equalize the, what we're receiving between the price that the student pays and the reimbursement with a free reimbursement. So, eventually over time, this increase will equalize that because right now, what food services receives between the price charged to the student and the reimbursement is less than what we receive for reimbursement for a free meal. So that, that's the purpose, but, um, we just have to plug in our, our cost and, um, price information into this calculator and then it tells us how much we need to raise prices.
Has it been volatile or is it just a slow steady increase?
It's a steady increase. I mean, it's a, it's a calculation and actually the closer we get to that, um, free reimbursement rate, um, the more we have to increase it, but 10 cents is the maximum. Um, we would never be, have to raise it above 10 cents.
Annually, is that what you're saying?
Annually, yes.
Annually, okay. So it's 10 cents more this year?
Correct.
How about last year, was it 10 cents more? So it's pretty much maxed out usually?
Yeah.
At the 10 cents, okay. Thank you. Anything else, guys? Thank you so much. What was your favorite? Did anybody have a favorite tonight? The food?
Swedish meatballs.
The Swedish meatballs.
I enjoyed the wrap.
I did too. It was very good.
Cookie.
Very good. Thank you Scott Nicole very much. Okay, Dr. Dugan is going to present demographic and enrollment information.
Actually, Mr. Yeager is going to start us out.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, Dr. Dugan and I are, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to visit with you a little bit about our updated demographic information. And of course, part of doing that, I want to express our district's thanks to Reed Alliance and Technology, um, and also all of our schools for the enormous job it is to get all the numbers in and all the information in to be ready for, for us for our September 20th count. This year, our September 22nd count. So, Dr. Dugan and I are going to share some information with you regarding, regarding that tonight. Um, the first map that you see is similar probably to maps that you've seen before and this one doesn't change a, a great deal from year to year, but this is where our students live. Um, this is what we have started calling our district the Skittle Map, that is little dots where all of our kiddos live across our system. And what you see is that about 83% of our students live in Olathe, about 10% of our students living in Overland Park and about 6% of our students living in Lenexa this year. As you probably are aware, we're a district that continues to grow and this year is actually our 49th year in a row where we have, um, increased our student numbers from one September 20 count to the next. Um, this year is our 49th year, almost 50 years of continuous growth, um, with our student population within our school district. This is our, um, number of student growth from last year's September 20 to this year's September 20. Um, ought to be pretty easy for us to remember this year. Um, 233 students as we are USD 233, so, um, probably a good number for us to remember this year as, as we move forward. Johnson County enrollment, um, us in Olathe, we continue to be the largest school district in Johnson County. Um, as I said in the last slide, we have grown about 233 students this year. Some of our neighbors, um, have also grown, of course. Shawnee Mission School District this year is up about 60 students. The Blue Valley School District this year is up only about 10 students. Um, the DeSoto School District is up about 22 students this year and the Spring Hill School District is up about 97 students this year. And you notice in the bottom it says Gardner's omitted because they're still working on their numbers in Gardner. New students to our district, of course, come from many different places, kind of an interesting table to look at. Um, about 433 students that are new to our district this year came from outside of the state, so kiddos that attended schools somewhere besides Kansas before. Um, we have about 218 kiddos who attended other schools, um, in, or, I'm sorry, came from Kansas outside of Johnson County. We have about 267 kiddos within our system this year, new to our system, that entered, um, from other Johnson County public school districts. And, and you see the list there that we get kiddos from lots and lots of different places that, um, join our system. We're, we're glad to have all of them. The next slide is something, of course, that we pay close attention to as a system each year as our numbers come in, but just the, um, ethnicity and racial trends that we experience in our school district. And so our current, um, student population as our September 20th, our September 20 count would show us is about 70% of our students are Caucasian, um, about 14% of our students Hispanic, um, and about 7% of our students African American. And you can see the rest there, but, um, our, our numbers of our students who qualify for these different groups continue to grow, um, across our system. With that information, Dr. Dugan's going to share a little bit more information with you.
A couple more snapshots of interesting information. Always looked better on our computer screen than it looks on this, I apologize. Um, looking at our special education numbers, uh, we've had one of our largest increases in our special education numbers in a number of years and it seems small, but a 1.64% increase of special ed students over last year, um, which has us as a district at a little over 15% of our population, uh, is served through special education in some capacity. About a little over 12% of those are students with disabilities, about 3% of those are students who are receiving gifted services, still fall in that special ed umbrella. Uh, interesting to note, so where's some of that growth? Where are some of our larger, uh, areas that show an increase from last year? Uh, students that fall in the category of other health impairments grew by 40 students. Again, not large numbers, but a larger increase than we've seen. Learning disabilities, uh, students with autism, 20 new students with autism, uh, and 20 new students that fall in developmentally delayed, uh, category. This is something we'll continue to watch. Having a, a kind of a significant increase in special ed is something we're going to need to watch trends on. Uh, we certainly feel some of that impact in some of our classrooms and staffing in the areas of autism and developmental delay. Uh, while those increases aren't large, those are classrooms that are typically have a much lower students to teacher ratio, so it has a greater impact, uh, on our staff. Looking at our English language learners, also we're seeing a, an increase this year from last year. In la, uh, last year, we had a total of 2,773 total students funded for a little over 1,800. Uh, this year, we're looking at a total, uh, over 3,000, 3,070, uh, students, um, that are English language learners, funding, receiving funding for a little over 2,000, 2,023. Again, an increase from 6.1% to 6.9%. So again, a steady increase in our students that are English language learners. Um, a really slight increase in our students that, uh, qualify for free and or reduced, uh, lunch program, um, again, going from, I can see it from here, a 28.4 to a 28.48, a slight increase then in our, our students living in poverty. Enrollment by grade, this is always somewhat interesting, there's a lot of data out here, so let me hit some highlights. Um, obviously you can see our largest class is our second grade class this year, our smallest class is our 12th grade class. With the exception of our 10th grade class and our senior class, all of our grades are over 2,100. Back in, uh, 2005, um, I think that data indicates we only had a couple of classes that were over, uh, 2,000 and now all but two are over. So we, this chart continues to show us our growth. Certainly if you compare the number of kindergartners over 2,100 coming into our system, uh, with less leaving, that continues to account, uh, for some of our growth. Those PK or preschool numbers, they'll continue to increase throughout this year, they'll hit about 1,000. Remember, we take preschoolers as they turn three, uh, so they don't all turn three before September 22nd, uh, they do that throughout the year, uh, and we'll take them whenever they turn three. So that number, number, excuse me, will continue, uh, to increase. And just some additional information, there's our, our male to female distribution, pretty, uh, even, always very interesting, 55 different student languages, uh, that are spoken by our students throughout the district. You'll see, uh, English, Spanish, um, Aharmic, I'm not positive I have it, uh, a language of, uh, spoken, um, from Ethiopia. Um, our poverty range, so this is the range, the percentage of students in any particular school that qualify, um, as free and reduced. Schools with as low a percentage as 1.85% to a school that has 85.82% of its entire student body that qualifies for free and reduced. Um, and we've seen an increase, uh, in our number of homeless students. So this year, uh, the count about 263 and that will continue, again, a number that unfortunately continues to increase throughout the year. Last year, about 244 homeless students and just as a reference point, back in 2010, only had about 99, uh, students that were homeless and tagged as such. So, that continues to be an area, um, of, of challenge certainly for those students and families and one we're paying lots of attention to. Looking just briefly, elementary schools, uh, in terms of our smallest elementary school is about 240 students, our largest 619. Uh, 72% of our kindergartners go to full day kindergarten and if they're not going to full day kindergarten, apparently they're going just to morning kindergarten with a small, a group of kids that enjoy that afternoon kindergarten time. They all enjoy it, uh, but by choice are attending afternoon. Um, and then last slide, and again, just some interesting pieces, middle school size, what's that look like? Uh, our smallest middle school, Oregon Trail at 533, it continues to have some nice growth, uh, there at Oregon Trail. Our largest at 827, but interesting to note, seven of our nine middle schools are over 700. So they really equalize in terms of seven of the nine are, are about the same size. There's our high schools by official count. Uh, in fact, uh, our smallest Northwest, uh, right, one student under 2,000. Uh, our largest, Olathe South. And then just interesting to note here on the right, um, Acacia, uh, our Kansas High School Association announces, you know, the, the classification, uh, for our, our sports teams based on size of schools. These are the top 10, uh, largest 6A high schools, uh, with Wichita East there at 2,300 and Washburn Rural the smallest, that just switched on its own, I apologize, let's see if we can go back, there we go. Um, and interesting to note, by the time we open up Olathe West, I, we will likely be the top four on this list. Uh, maybe the, the second, third, fourth and fifth, but also possibly the first, second, third and fourth in terms of our size, should these other schools and numbers not change. So, uh, we've got some big high schools that are, that are doing great though. So with that, Brent and I are happy to take any questions.
Which middle school was 827?
I believe it's Prairie Trail. I'm looking at Chris. Yes, he gave me the head nod. Prairie Trail, Prairie Trail, Mission Trailer in a, a, kind of a race in the next couple of years to be the largest of our middle schools.
Questions?
Which of the elementary schools are in the lower range?
Which is the smallest? Westview?
Westview. Uh, Westview and Northview are our two smallest elementary schools this year.
The special education breakdown, even the gifted students, do they all have an individual education plan and IEP?
They do, so the, and that's, if you qualify for special education services, then you receive an individualized plan that outlines your services and goals.
Okay, so all the numbers on that?
Every single one of those has an IEP that's redone yearly.
Any other questions, comments? Great to be growing, right? Thank you. Thank you so much, thanks for that information. All right, we can work through some business before we take a comfort break. How about, let's move to the action and consent agenda. I would entertain a motion or we can pool for questions or comments?
I'd move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.08 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Poland, seconded by Mr. McCune. Would you do a roll call vote, please, Joy? Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, moving on to action bids, contracts and agreement. 6.01, assisted transportation services. Dr. Berry, did you want to make some comments?
We have a couple staff members that would be glad to make a couple comments just to explain this. You have before you a contract with the assisted transportation. The districts don't work with assisted for several years now. Uh, basically, they provide van service for, uh, many of our students. You saw a homeless count of students, uh, students that may, who had resided in our district that may, uh, be staying in, uh, somebody else's house. Sometimes it's not efficient to run bus lines to, um, transport students. Um, special needs students, uh, uh, are transported by assisted transportation. Assisted really has no competition. Their competition is cab companies, which really do not facilitate the transportation of students very well, not very efficient, kind of, they serve other clientele as well. Assisted kind of grew up, they grew up in the, um, medical assistance field really and districts in the area have begun to use them. What we've done is, uh, sat down to try and make a more structured agreement with them in order to, uh, find some efficiencies and, uh, through a contractual relationship, keep our costs in check, even find some ways to save some money. But it is, is an extremely efficient way that's even making inroads into some of more typical, uh, transportation routes where a bus is difficult to get down a, uh, a, a country road or, or a tight area for only one or two students. This is an excellent option that we have. So, uh, we negotiated, uh, this contract with them.
I was going to mention just kind of the, the value they add to our kind of total transportation system, certainly for students, an awesome provider and has continued to, to, to serve us well. Um, some things that the van service offers, you know, sometimes we just need to transport three or four students, so obviously it's more economical to do van. They offer us greater flexibility. It's hard to get a bus at the start and end of a school day or at noon time. Um, and so, but we have students that need to be transported in different places in terms of community, um, experiences or they're going to the MNU campus, some of those things for our special ed programs and vans are available, uh, to do that for us. Uh, for some of our special needs kids, they're more comfortable, vans are, uh, they're all air conditioned, they're climate controlled, they're easier to get in and out of, uh, in terms of, of access for, uh, some of our students. For our special ed students that are high school age transitioning, it's a more natural transportation transition for them. Um, a big yellow bus will not come pick them up, uh, as 22 and 23 year olds are going to have to navigate a more natural transportation system. And there really are some van services and systems that's a more natural, uh, transition for them. So, um, and we've been incredibly pleased with the service, the assisted, uh, transportation. Uh, they're clean, uh, they're, uh, videoed, uh, they meet all of the student transportation safety requirements that often cabs and other car services didn't provide us in the past. So, we've been really pleased with them from a service standpoint and just the value they add.
I just wanted to comment that I like the innovative ways of trying to save money, like, in this, I, I noticed where we're actually giving them an opportunity to park some of their vehicles on our property, which I think it said here, we save almost $62,000, um, just by providing that. So I commend you guys on looking at different ways of, of, of being able to save money in, in something that really makes a lot of sense.
This is another out of the box thinking that's very much part of our brand that, uh, duplicate, we're not duplicating and wasting and we're thinking out of the box on ways to save money and this is great, great identification of a great opportunity. Any other comments, questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the student transportation agreement and facility usage agreement with assisted transportation services incorporated as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shear, seconded by Mr. Parker. You could do a roll call vote. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, 6.02 bids for Olathe West High School. Anything on that?
Greg is also available, if you'd have some questions about these early bid packages, he could certainly answer something.
Mr. Thompson, you know, I was, I was, as, as I was reading this contract and I saw that this bid was made up of four work packages. Would it be possible in the future to split them into smaller, more smaller, manageable projects in, especially for board members to be able to review? The, the scope of this, of these four projects seem, and, and I'm not an architect or engineer obviously, but it seems like a lot of work being done here, which, which is obvious, but it just seems like it would be somewhat- but it just seems like it would be somewhat format whereby we'd be able to more easily evaluate the, the whole package. Is, is that, is that a reasonable request, or is that not possible in the world of?
I think it's a reasonable request, and I think it's what we've done. I, I think, I think a lot of what's causing the confusion is terminology. Where we talk about work packages, and construction packages, and bid packages, and what all of those mean, the reality is they all mean the same thing. Within construction management, there is not a standard language from C M firm to C M firm. J E Dunn refers to some of these as construction packages, we have historically referred to them as bid packages. But what we're doing here, Mr. Parker, is taking a project, that's a seventy-five to eighty-million-dollar project, and we're breaking it up into little bitty pieces.
So tonight, we see fencing?
Well, of those, then we receive bids on every one of those little packages.
Okay, landscaping?
We had three bids on landscaping, three bids on fencing, three on irrigation.
And the pavers, and then site concrete, and asphalt paving. That just seemed like a lot of stuff in one package, but it's four different packages?
That's, it's really three different packages. There was a fencing package.
So could we see those as three different packages? In other words, take, I understand it's a lot of work for the board, but it seemed like it would be easier for us to evaluate.
It's three different agenda items?
There you go.
We could do that, we never have before. And in fact, we have in the past given-
We have not built a high school in ten years, though.
But in the past, we've given, for a middle school, for example, we gave you sixteen and seventeen bid packages in one agenda item, but we can break it up into thirty-five bid, agenda items if you wanted.
I'll leave.
That's how many packages we're going to end up with on high school.
Then we'll blame it on you.
I'm fine with the way we've been doing it.
All right, we'll leave it like that, then.
Well, Greg, I think you're right, a lot of it is the terminology. I mean, I, I guess as I was trying to read through this and try to, these, these alternatives in the future date, and each one of these have bid alternates, and alternate number five and three, I mean, trying to, and again, maybe it's just an opportunity to educate, educate us a little bit better on the terminology and what we're trying to look for. Maybe I read too much into it, and I'm making it harder on myself, it, it could, it probably is a lot simpler than what I try to make.
But we, we could standardize a little bit more. I think a lot of the problem is, is they, is they, we tried to add more attachments to the bids, so that you begin to see what the construction manager is giving us. That sort of begins to confuse it, because what J E Dunn will call a construction package, McCallan Gordon will call a work package, we call both of those bid packages. That's where the languages begin to get a little confusing as we've brought more into it. I can, I can write something for you that will help you understand, as long as we understand that all of those things that end in "package" all mean the same thing. And, and sort of define what those are, I can give you a list of what the thirty-some remaining bid packages are going to be, and a rough idea of when we're going to bid them, so that you can begin to sort of, sort of make some, sort of begins to make some sense. And, and it may make more sense to us sitting in a room, because we work with it every day, and I could try to, you know, sort of work with Mr. Hutchison and Dr. Berry to make it more simplified, so that it's a little easier to understand.
And many of these are future action items from previous month, isn't it?
Yes. Well, I think we had a future action item that sort of said, you know, we're going to have thirty-five packages over the next six months, and this is what we're going to do. We can define that a little more, in more detail.
But now we get the specific bids?
Yes.
The packages, okay. I would-
While, while you're there, what, what are you going to do with the practice fields out there at West, that you're not putting the boosters, pumping and all that stuff in?
Well, what are we going to do with them?
Just going to put sprinklers out there?
Right now, right now, and I think you have to look at bid alternates right now as sort of an opportunity to help us fine-tune getting in budget. What we're saying is today, tonight, we're not willing to commit to the money to irrigate those fields tonight. We have two and a half years to get to the end of our bidding and see if there's some funds left to put these alternates in, or we have two and a half years to work with Mr. Hutchison to find alternate methods of financing some of these alternates. And we also have the real potential to realize that Northwest opened with only one of their athletic fields sprinkled. At least here, we're providing a main line and hose bibs so that you could put sprinklers out on the other fields. But that's not saying that when the school opens, those fields won't be irrigated, we're just trying to get ourselves into budget. These early packages of not committing funds right now that we, that we may wish we hadn't at some point in the future, but then, you know, in March, when we bid the last of the building, we may have the funds to go back and start adding these back in. So, so right now, yes, on day, as of tomorrow, they will not be irrigated, but there will be hose bibs to them, and they will likely be irrigated before school opens. And if they aren't, that's something that the community would just have to make a decision, Northwest didn't have sprinkler systems on all of their fields that they had opened.
So if you picked up on that, he earlier said two and a half years, but really the last bid package is next March.
Well, but we have two and a half years, if we have to find alternate funding, we have two and a half years before the school opens to find that alternate, because you can put an irrigation system in in a month, so.
But the comfort level will come with that last bid package, and then we'll see where we are in alternates.
Are you, yes?
Thank you very much, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve a six-dot-zero-two, the trade bids listed in the bid summary for Olathe West High School as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. McCune, seconded by Mr. Poland. You can take the roll call. Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right, we're going to take a six-minute comfort break and come back at seven, thank you.
Well, she's tough.
Fifteen minutes for a community late night.
Six and a half minutes. Thank you, welcome, welcome. We are going to move into the recognition portion of our evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Okay, Maggie?
My first recognition today honors very importantly to the school of Olathe. Outstanding alumni are selected annually by the U.S. Public School Association, the Wall of Honor recognition. Did you have a moment?
No, and I'd also like to ask Susan Eagle Druck, of the Alumni Association, while I'm chair of the Department of Health.
Oh, I'm plugged in now, okay, sorry. Thank you. The purpose of this prestigious award is to recognize Olathe School District alumni for their lifetime achievements. These individuals were recognized last night at a special induction ceremony. In addition to the alumni awards, the Alumni Association also recognized an individual with the Distinguished Person of Honor Award for her exceptional support to the district over the years. While a fame honoree, when I call your name or the name of the family member you are representing, please come to the front, and please stay up at the front, because we'll take a nice group photo at the end. We will begin with Donald Ashlock, John P. St. John Memorial High School, class of nineteen forty-four, who is represented tonight by his wife, Donna. Don excelled in football, basketball, and track. After high school, he spent two years with the U.S. Navy. He then went on to the University of Kansas, graduating with a business degree. He spent fifty-nine years with First Federal Savings in Olathe, and also served on the Olathe School Board from nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty-two. Congratulations. Our next honoree is John Douglas, Olathe High School, class of nineteen seventy. John graduated from the University of Kansas with a bachelor's degree in Personnel Administration and a master's degree in Public Administration. He spent forty years with the Overland Park Police, Police Department, fourteen of which were his police chief. He won several major public safety awards in his role as chief of police. After he retired earlier this year, he joined the Shawnee Mission School District as the Safety and Security Manager. Congratulations to you. Next, we will recognize Hazel Hendricks, John P. St. John Memorial High School, class of nineteen fifty-two. Hazel has enjoyed a banking career spanning over thirty years. She was elected president of the Alumni Association in two thousand and seven, and has played a major role in revitalizing the association and planning school reunions every five years. In addition, she was named in Ingram, Ingram's Magazine Hero in Healthcare for her work as Olathe Medical Center volunteer, and was honored as the Hospital's Volunteer of the Year as well. Congratulations to you. Our next honoree tonight is Jeff Myers, Olathe High School, class of nineteen seventy-seven. A strong athletic ability gained Jeff a full-ride football scholarship to Kansas State, where he earned a degree in secondary education. He teaches P.E. and coaches football at Olathe East, and has also been the mayor of Shawnee since two thousand and four. Our next honoree is Gary White, Olathe High School, class of nineteen sixty. He could not be here tonight, but we did want to share a sampling of his success as well. Gary's interest in electronics and engineering at high school led him to enlist in the U.S. Air Force, where he trained pilots and navigation procedures, and became a weather officer and provided weather support for manned spacecraft operation. After obtaining his master's in electrical engineering, he subsequently developed several classified projects, and some are credited with ending the Cold War and countering terrorist actions. Let's give Gary a round of applause. Our next honoree is Shannon Wickliff, Olathe East, class of nineteen ninety-four. Shannon got his start receiving academic honors and as a standout athlete, earning one varsity letter per season. He then went on to earn his bachelor's degree in political science from the University of Kansas. He, his service to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation includes president of the board in two thousand and twelve, chairman of the grant committee, and fundraising efforts to support the district. He was also the co-chair for the Olathe Bond Task Force in two thousand and thirteen. Congratulations to you. Our last honoree is Ruth Ann Hackler, Distinguished Person of Honor. Ruth Ann graduated from Washburn University with a bachelor's degree. She became a high school teacher in Topeka before coming to Olathe, where she taught business at John P. St. John Memorial High School in the early nineteen fifties. She continued to be an advocate for public education by serving on the Olathe Board of Education from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen ninety-one, on the Kansas Association of School Boards from nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen eighty-eight, and she also served on the National School Boards Association, was a member of the Kansas House of Representatives, director of the Metropolitan Kansas City United Community Services, Good Samaritan Board Member, it goes on, she's wonderful, senior-serving schools volunteer, parents' teachers' board member, Olathe Public Library Board Member and President, Olathe YMCA Board Member, and Olathe Medical Center Charitable Foundation Board Member, among many other activities. Congratulations to all of our Wall of Honor honorees. Next, I'd like to recognize Selena Lou from Olathe East High School. Selena, if you could come forward, along with Principal Bill Weber. Selena is a junior at Olathe East and has earned a perfect thirty-six ACT score. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning a composite score of thirty-six varies from year to year, less than one-tenth of one percent of students taking the ACT earn this top score. She is one of nine district students who have achieved this honor in the last school, two school years. She's involved in debate, Spanish National Honor Society, varsity swimming, and is, is a tutor in the Olathe East High School Writing Center. Congratulations to you on this wonderful accomplishment. I know you have family here tonight, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized Our next recognition tonight is of Maddie McCracken from Olathe North High School. Maddie, if you could come forward, along with softball coach Frank Barnes and principal David Moorford. Maddie is a junior at Olathe North and has been named the second-team All-American by the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. She was also named an All-American Scholar-Athlete. And Maddie, is your family here tonight, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Our next recognition tonight is of Reagan Hathaway from Olathe Northwest High School. Reagan, if you could come forward, along with softball coach Mike Mahoney and principal Reagan is a junior at Olathe Northwest and has been named first-team All-American by the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. Thank you. And Reagan, is your family here tonight, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized And our next recognition tonight is for Scott Carpenter, Assistant Director of Business and Financial Services. Scott, if you could come forward, along with Chief Financial and Operations Officer John Hutchison. He's got a hand off the camera. Scott has earned recognition from the Universal Public Procurement Certification Council, where he has earned the Certified Public Procurement Officer credential. He is the first person in a Kansas school district to receive this honor. We do have one final special recognition tonight, if you could, oh, yeah, if you could stand as I call your names. Board members Amy Martin, Brent McCune, and Rick Shear have received a certificate of achievement by the Kansas Association of School Boards for achieving honor roll level one in the Leadership Training Academy program. This KASB Leadership Academy encourages board members to seek continuing education to help them become better district leaders. We'd like to recognize them for this achievement.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here to recognize these amazing individuals. Okay, it's time for the public comments portion of our evening.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that the speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individuals, staff members, or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. Do we have individuals this evening?
Hello, my name is Paul Schwartz. I live at ninety-nine oh-two Woodstock in Lenexa, Kansas. I have two daughters who currently go to Olathe Public Schools. Sorry, I don't know if that's working right?
Yes.
It's working.
I've, I've got a long, detailed background in the IT business. I spent six years in Air Force Intelligence, I've been in corporate IT for about twenty years, specializing the last ten years in security and compliance. As my kids got older and older in school, I started to look more and more into how the school systems were protecting data around our children. According to the FTC, the most valuable data there is to steal is that of the data of anyone under the age of eighteen. Federal Trade Commission, the most valuable data there is is anyone under the age of eighteen to steal. I started to look at other industries I work in, in healthcare, finance, mortgage lending, realized there are very strong compliance requirements around that data. You swipe a credit card, there's a PCI standard. You go to the doctor, there's a HIPAA standard. Finance, you'll see the FFIEC standard, I don't know if you have a background in that area. There is no parallel standard here in the school districts. That gave me grave concern. Realized, uh, we need to do something about that. As a concerned parent, as a subject matter expert in this space, I'm concerned about my children's data not being held to some sort of a standard that best practices are being used. I can tell you firsthand, best practices don't hold up in a court of law. When I consult with my clients who are up and down the Fortune five-hundred companies, best practices do not hold up in a court of law, standards do. So with that said, there was a- So with that said, there was a Senate Bill 367 that was passed into law around student data privacy on July 1st of this year. As my children were enrolled in school, fifth grade, eighth grade, there should have been forms put in front of my wife and I to opt in to data sharing. Forms were never presented. Forms didn't come home. Forms were never emailed. At this point in time, to date, October, what is it, 2nd, no forms have come home to the parents, I've talked to many parents across many different parts of the Olathe School District, that adhere to the new Kansas state law around student data privacy and protection. I realize this is not a Q&amp;A session, however, it's a long day for me as it is for you. I'll be willing to stay and answer or entertain any questions you have after the meeting's over. I don't know how that works, but I'm to the point where I wanted to come down here and to say there is a problem. It is now a legal problem for the Olathe School District that they're not in compliance with the state law, and conversely, that is of grave concern to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Dr. Berry, would now be an appropriate time to...
There is an agenda item with policies tonight, and that Privacy Data Act is one of those policies that we're putting in place, but we have staff that are prepared to share that we are in compliance. We've visited with KESB, we have everything in line, but there are no issues for us at this time other than implementing the procedure, but we can talk about that later or do it now, it doesn't matter.
It's on our agenda.
Yes.
We're almost to that, so how about we stick with our agenda and we'll work to it, or...
Why don't you skip to 7.02?
We can do that, yes.
And you know, it's been brought to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Please stay for a dialogue. Do we have any other public comments? Mr. Parker, did I speak over you? I'm sorry if I did.
I'm sorry.
Did you say anything else?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I think it's 7.02.
Okay.
Is that right, Dr. Berry?
Yes.
Any other public comments? Okay, so let's move directly to 7.02, which is Board Policy Revisions, and among those is a policy dealing with data.
I'll provide you a brief overview, answer some questions that were raised in terms of our district's compliance with this act. In front of you guys tonight is a board policy that directly is not only a requirement of the act, that the local school board put forth a policy, and so that's what is before you tonight. In terms of our implementation of it, so we have started with PowerPoint presentations, information that was shared with our staff during pre-service about the act, about the requirements, the importance of student data and their privacy. And then our next step has been board policy, and then on the agenda for our administrators next week, we'll be laying out our process for obtaining, it's not a consent item in the act, actually, it's just they have to verify they received notice of our implementation of the act. We did double-check at the beginning of the year and again with KASB. There is no timeline.
Yes.
Dr. Dugan, for the benefit of our viewing audience, would you just...
Kansas Association of School Boards.
Thank you very much. And they have a legal department that...
They have a legal department that we use often as a resource that's helping districts throughout the state interpret legislation and laws, et cetera.
So we pay dues to them and we can use them as a resource on legal matters such as this. Okay. It's good for the public to know that.
No, thank you. So we followed back up with them again today and talked through our implementation, verify a couple of things, and in fact, we are online with districts throughout the state and expectations as interpreted by the attorneys at the Kansas Association of School Boards. In terms of measured steps towards implementation, we started in pre-service. Again, this became active in July. According to ourselves and our own interpretation and the attorneys at KASB, there wasn't an anticipation that you would start the school year good to go. It's impossible in a district this size to turn something around like that. So here's our requirement. So for parent-teacher conferences, we'll begin, every parent attending will be provided the notice that's part of this act that explains to them the act and our responsibility as an educational agency. Yes?
Can you just explain quickly why we didn't do that at registration? Why we chose not to do that at registration?
The time that the act went into place, my registrations, mid-July, to turn that around with process procedures, training, we also felt very important, if we're going to hand something to our parents, we need to train our staff on what it is first. Remember, our staff don't come back till after enrollment in terms of full staff, and so...
So if we had rolled this out at registration, it would have caused more confusion than it would have answered questions?
We had the conversation in July about should we do it at enrollment. We felt the most responsible thing to do was if we're going to hand parents information that the staff and administrators are knowledgeable about what they're handing to them and can answer some questions, we wouldn't have been prepared for that in mid-July.
Okay.
So, and again, we double-checked, there was no requirement to start the school year with it. It is something that you must be diligent about moving forward in terms of implementation.
So for the benefit of the public, we're not in violation of any state law at this point in time?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
So, parent-teacher conferences, we'll be providing our teachers with additional information, some talking points, we'll be providing parents a copy of the notice, and then we're just required to get a signature from them that they received the notice. Not that they agree with it, they're not opting into something in this stance, they have acknowledged their receipt of the notice, and then we'll continue to provide answers to questions they have, refer them to the building administrator, to myself, others here at the office. We want them to have their questions answered, but we feel very confident about our process. Again, it came to us in July, and so we feel good that by really end of this first semester quarter, really, we'll be in great compliance with it and really ahead of most school districts.
And Dr. Dugan, that notice is an annual written notice that the student data may be disclosed as outlined in the act? I'm just reading the law right now.
You got it. It's a, and we can give you copies of it. It's a, I highlighted this, it's a two-sided, clear explanation. Again, things like this often are provided to us as samples from the Kansas Association of School Boards, reviewed by attorneys, shared throughout the state. We've picked up that language, made sure that was also our interpretation of it, and that's what we're using to provide the notice to parents. It'll also be posted on our website as an annual notice, among many important annual notices, so it'll be there, but what's different about this notice is we have to provide it and then get a signature, and we've got lots of parents in a school district of 29, 404, and so we need to do this well and spend some time to make it also not burdensome to our families, that they understand.
And this is annually, and you have to keep it on file, right?
Every year and maintain that you've received their acknowledgement of the receipt of their notice.
And then the interpretation, the law has no date, so we're kind of left to our own demise or our own whim to figure out if it was calendar year or school year that they intended when they said annual written notice, at least on my end of it, has KASB or Mr. Mason...
And we've verified that too, that it's not clear, there's not a by now or within two months from July 1st. I mean, typically, when there's that timeframe in place, it's clear in the language of the act, and it's not there. We'd reviewed it, Scott Mason, we knew there wasn't a by now, you have to have every parent provided notice, and we confirm that again this afternoon, that you have to take measured, diligent steps towards compliance.
Like the school boards not having a workshop for schools until later this month, but they're, that's the kind of help that they're willing to give on that, but it's later this month, the first time.
So the law doesn't specify that you have to have it implemented by X date?
Does not. Does not.
You have to do it annually though.
The question, the act places restrictions on what information can be collected and shared, so obviously, that information was in the, written in the law. Is that correct?
That is.
So just in past practices for the Olathe School District, is that information that we had been abiding by in the past?
Correct. We've been in compliance in terms of...
So we're not doing anything...
We've been in compliance in terms of our protection of student data, who we shared with, having agreements with those we shared with. Those things have been in place and continue to be refined and as outlined, but it's not new practice for us. What's new for us is providing parents notice and getting a signature from every parent that they received it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'd like to ask Ms. Line to come up in a minute. I understand, that's the data, now I need to hear, I think the public needs to hear what we're doing internally to protect that data from it being hacked by an outside source. In other words, our firewalls that we have in place.
Yeah, of course, we've got all those firewalls in place, but I would really feel more comfortable presenting you with our annual security report that our security analyst develops for us. He's an employee internally, and I think that would explain in much better terminology because it's quite lengthy, all of the steps that we do, and honestly, we don't always share all of our security things publicly. So I would feel more comfortable getting that report to Dr. Berry, if you're okay with that, and then if you have any questions, we can meet with you.
Just so we have some way that we can reassure the public and our parents that we are, we have a good security system within our data on, from a hardware standpoint and a software standpoint to make sure that it's not going to be hacked.
Absolutely.
We talked about this again when we talked about our insurance, and I asked a question about, and I understand it, it's, this is letting the horse out of the barn about data, cybersecurity, insurance. Have we had time to look into that? Have we gotten a bit on that yet? That was my request back in June. I understand, but it's an expensive thing if we have to go in and start notifying parents over and above what the law requires, and it would be good for us to talk about having that some sort of reimbursement policy from an insurance company if we were ever, unfortunately, had that happen. So we would not only have the aggravation in the mental anguish, but we would also have a financial responsibility as well. All right, good enough.
I think it'll be a good report then that we'll bring back to you, and Mr. Stewart raises good questions about the security of information today. It's my understanding of this Privacy Act that was written as legislation is dealing with the questions that can be asked and who you're sharing it with. It was not really about the security. It's about, you know, who do you share these types of questions and answers with, and if that kind of information goes to a statewide collection, we need to let parents know that that's being done. That's my understanding of that.
I understand, and it kind of, to me, it dovetails into the whole security thing.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
If a parent is, if we don't obtain a signature from a parent, like the HIPAA laws, you know, that they have all the patients sign, to what extent are we required to chase that down?
The act isn't clear on that. We're accustomed to the, in, we'd say, the special education world, we provide parents notice of many things as they start that process, and we have to get their signature of acknowledgement, and so we'll work hard with those. We don't need them to agree or not agree, we just need them to say we handed it to them, and so we'll work with those families, but might we get someone that refuses to? Absolutely, we just have to be diligent about our attempts to help them understand and try to get a signature, but the act doesn't speak to consequences if you don't or what you do with a parent that doesn't want to, but we've worked through that in other scenarios as well.
But it's not an opt-in? If they don't sign it?
It is not an opt-in. It's not an opt-in. It is an acknowledgement of notice. So that's a misunderstanding. It's an acknowledgement of notice that we, as a district, provided you notice of this Student Data Privacy Act. They are not saying they're letting us share the data. That's not what this is. It's not a consent, it's an acknowledgement of notice.
And is it your intent that next year it would be ready at registration?
Very much so. We're going to look at, timing-wise, now we've got the time to plan that, and there's a couple of different options for us. One, having it ready for registration. Not every parent comes to registration, so we're still going to have a Plan B. And can we do it for many electronically? That's what I was going to ask. Maybe as we move towards more of an electronic registration, before you can register, you have to read and click that you accept when you go onto your iTunes account. You come up, you accept, and some of those things. So we'll look at using technology really to ease the burden for a large district, but also parents, you know, to come in and get a sheet of paper and signs, a little old school, so we'll be working on that.
That speaks to Plan B because we know at the secondary level, our participation by parents at...
Conferences.
Conferences, thank you, about 50%. How are we going to get those other 50% parents?
Here's the good news, October's our best percentage at conferences, so a little higher.
Still going to have 25% that are not getting...
And we've outlined what we'll do. So our first run will be at parent-teacher conferences, buildings will track who they didn't do, we'll do either mailings or student, we'll have to try a variety of means. It is a large task for a school district this size to get all parents to say, yep, I got that. So it's a big task, we're just going to have to do a variety of ways, but our first big run at it's going to be parent-teacher conferences.
I'd be interested in what all Plan B, C, D, E will cost us over the course of a year, because I think when a law is enacted like that, that puts the onus of responsibility on a school district, then that's one more expense that's not related to education.
And staff time. High schools of 2000, tracking down 2,000 signatures on a form takes staff time as well, so we'll be watching that.
Also known as an unfunded mandate?
Correct.
Well, can I speak to what may be causing some confusion in Senate Bill 367 and now the Student Data Privacy Act? Any personally identifiable information may be disclosed if an adult student or minor student's parent or legal guardian consents in writing. That's where the consent comes in.
Good. And let me give you an example. So this, this first piece of providing every family a notice isn't consent. Here's what we'll have to continue to address as part of this act moving forward. For example, our Communities That Care survey, we love that data. We get tons of good information that impacts our programming for students, okay? That survey contains personal information, and we're going to have to do, right now, if the survey doesn't change, every parent's going to have to opt in for their student to take that survey. We understand that as part of the law. We have concerns with the challenges, again, that is for a district this size, and the real difference in our data pool comparing that data, we never share that data on a personal level, a student identifiable level, it's always shared in the aggregate, and so we're working through the intent of that act on things like that, but that is the opt-in. Parents will have to opt in in order for us to let their child participate in that survey. We've got some time, that's usually a January survey, so we're working through what that will look like in terms of another form, another signature, and those pieces. So that's some of the opt-in confusion, I think, as well.
When I think of as aggregate data, we're fine.
If you, if you read through there, aggregate's fine except for if you're asking information about the family's personal beliefs, religion, other areas. When it crosses a personal line, then it also kicks in for an opt-in consent. The Communities That Care survey in some pieces is asking some information about home life.
And that's not our survey, right? It's the state...
Not our survey? Not our survey, but it's a survey we like, use the data a lot in an aggregate sense, not at the student level, though.
The community uses the data quite a bit.
The community uses the data, it's how we get grants for some of our drugs and alcohol education is funded based on our ability to track data through the communities that care, so it's got lots of spider kind of pieces going in different aspects of what we do.
Questions, comments?
Things I'd like, about the parental notification part of it, there's really nothing in the policy that addresses that, and I would like to see something in the policy that says that we, you know, basically the wording that is part of the law, that we will offer, you know, annually what it requires, the consent form. There's nothing in the policy that says we will do that, and I would like to see that in the policy.
I think it does, actually, Mike, it says the district shall annually provide parents notice of their rights. Is that what you're speaking of?
Where's that?
First paragraph. Here, pass this to Mike, I underlined it right there.
And one of the, one of the things I would like to maybe stress or clarify, the law basically required that school districts do about five different things, and the notification is one component of it. You know, you can't do biometric, can't collect biometric information, can't do the surveys, you've got to have data sharing agreements, so on and so forth. So four out of those five things are in place in the district. The only thing that we're still sort of working through is the notification piece, so I just want to make sure you understand, we are doing, the law is being implemented, it's just the notification piece that's still being phased in.
And I think Dr. Berry explained it very well, too. Part of the biggest concern, I think, from people probably outside the, or parents, I guess, any parents, grandparents, is the fact that not what we do with the data, it's what other people that we share it with do with it. And just for example, we referenced FERPA, and it's my understanding that back in 2011, FERPA basically was, the teeth was taken out of FERPA, and it's basically become a best practice now instead of actually any law, and, you know, a number of articles, just some headlines, you know, basically that I was, you know, you can Google a lot of things, but one of the things that I came up with was that, basically, one of the reinterpretations of FERPA by the Department of Education says that this reinterpretation gives non-governmental actors increased access to student personal data, and that's what was... And that's what was adopted as a final resolution. Just some headlines also, you know, once again, the concern for what happens to the data. Google, in a, basically, in a sworn statement filed with federal court, Google admitted to scanning student emails to serve students' targeted advertisements. Where did that come from? Basically, recently revised regulations that significantly weaken the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, the Federal Student Privacy Act. So there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that are weakening the ability for, once we share the data, and if you look at a lot of the language, it's somewhat, you know, it's a stretch as to who we can, pretty well undefined as to who we can share it with. The way I say, and the reason I say that is that, you know, things like the policy, basically, the authorized personnel of an educational agency. Okay, who are the authorized personnel? I'd like to see that defined a little bit more explicitly. Students are authorized personnel of state agencies or to a service provider of a state agency. Okay, once again, that's data that we're sharing with somebody that, you know, yeah, there's rules in place, but we all know that breaches in other people's computers can be, you know, hacked in, you know, look at the big banks. They've got all kinds of security, and people found a way to break into them.
Also, talking about a data sharing agreement.
What is an agreement? We're being asked to sign, basically, a policy that says if you sign an agreement, okay, what's that agreement? I'd rather see that agreement put to us as a board to make sure that we understand that it's, you know, it meets the guidelines. We're walking on, as far as I'm concerned, we're walking on tricky data. We've got computers with every one of our kids now, or every two kids in elementary school. We're going to have one, probably one with everyone in the high schools. There's just going to be so much more and more opportunity for data to be used, abused. And I guess I, it's probably from my own ignorance that I'm raising these questions is because I've got some grave concerns as far as, you know, you know, what's going to happen to the data after it leaves us. And, you know, there's, they talk about, there's some of the agreements you've got to have destroy the data, okay? Who oversees the destruction of that data? I don't see anything.
And keep in mind, some of these provisions just apply to, because there's sort of two types of student data. There's sort of the aggregate that's not, you can't personally identify who a student is, and then you have personally identifiable information. So there's two sort of different ways that those are handled, and there's increased protection if it's personally identifiable.
Let me address a couple of pieces and then kind of see where you guys want to go. My understanding, the act puts forth in writing some protections that haven't been in place. I mean, its intention was to offer more protection of student data and clearly outline things that we, as an educational agency, need to do. Inform our parents more of our responsibility to be cautious in the sharing data. So my sense is this is more than has been in place. I had looked up what the agreement says. The agreements are all individualized. You know, there isn't one agreement that everybody signs. They're based on what data you're sharing with whom and for why. We can share some samples of ones we've signed between us and KSDE. And again, KSDE posts all those agreements online, who they have data share agreements with. There's an increased amount of transparency out there. And again, we're happy to share some of that information, Mike, with you, if that's helpful to get more understanding. But my understanding is the act and our ability to provide parents notice actually offers more protection that's been, that has been in place previously.
And I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, are we, you know, like I said, it's probably out of my ignorance as much as anything, are we doing enough to protect the data? And like I said, the concern is not within us. The concern is once we hand it off to somebody, you know, because the FERPA laws have basically been relaxed enough that it gives outside service providers more access to data than they have in the past. So if we give something to KSDE that then they pass on to, on to the federal government, boom, all of a sudden, they decide they can share it with outside service providers.
But then service providers have to fall into the regulations that are now defined in this act about it has to meet these guidelines. And the FERPA piece, and I'll address this quickly and then decide if, how you guys want to take action. You know, FERPA in 2011 made a decision to not address this issue of the exchange from the local education agency to the state departments. They chose not to do that. FERPA is still the governing legislation law in terms of individual educational student records, and it's got some very specific rules that are, that we follow very closely, and individual student information is very protected under FERPA. So what it failed to do for some in 2011 was address the sharing of a local agency to the state department that possibly could go to a third party. Other aspects of FERPA continue to be kind of the ruling in terms of individual education records. And there's, it's quite strict in terms of how we care for and are the custodians of those records that we stay in compliance on and watch very carefully.
We can go on all night long, probably, here. But what I would, what I would like to ask is that that, this policy be pulled from tonight's meeting. If nothing else, to allow me to ask some more questions. And then if it's deemed so, we can pass it because if, what we're saying is we're in compliance because we're progressing along those roads. We've got a proposed draft of the policy, so if we don't pass it tonight, I don't think it's a huge deal because we are proceeding along toward what we've said is that it be in compliance with the law. So I would, I guess I would ask the board, fellow board members, to remove it from tonight's vote, and I guess, like I said, give me opportunity to satisfy myself and if any of you else, the rest of you, have any of the same questions and concerns I do, satisfy you. So that would be my suggestion that we pull it off.
Are we legally in having, running up against any deadlines? My understanding was no.
Right. There's no timetable in terms of passing the policy, so.
If we don't take action this evening, does that mean that at conferences you wouldn't be able to go ahead and hand out, get the parents to sign the notifications?
No, we would still go forward with doing that. Yeah, we're already implementing, because it's the law, it's just the policy that we're working on getting enacted.
So there'd be no damage done if we went?
No, not.
There would be no damage done if we moved ahead, too, because policies can always be rewritten based on experience and knowledge gained over the course of implementing it. I mean, policies are rewritten all the time, so I guess you have to weigh any pluses or minuses.
And I think Mr. Poland's asking about administrative guidelines. How are we going to? What does this look like? How's training? And that's typically not part of board policy. So, and you're right, this is July that it came. We're continuing to talk about how we're going to implement, how we're going to get notice, and put those into what I consider administrative procedures or guidelines. And that's something that's going to be fluid for us for a while as we work through some of this, but, and that's not typically part of board policy, but it is something you develop as a companion to policy.
Mr. Poland, would, were you thinking a month delay on this policy, or what window of time were you?
Yeah. That's no reason not to, you know, you've got to have a deadline for everything, so deadlines make you move.
Fellow board members, if you agree, we could...
I think it's an important enough issue that all board members should be able to be comfortable with the policy and be able to support the policy when it comes to the board. So I would be all right with delaying the action on this until our next meeting.
Thank you.
Just on the one.
Just on the one.
That's all I'm asking.
How about before we entertain a motion, let's look at the other policies. Is there anything you wanted to dialogue about that? And then...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If there's no other commentary to go over, I would entertain a motion to approve Item 7.2, Board Policy Revisions, with the exception of pulling out the IDAE Student Data Privacy Act to be considered next month. I'll entertain, I'd take a motion.
I would move to make that motion, which would be, which would be approve all of the policy revisions as presented, except for IDAE.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. A motion by Harlan Parker, seconded by Mike Poland. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
No.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I just want to comment on this, though, just, so I've got some clarification. What is it other than, are we looking at them to rewrite the policy? Are we looking at them just to give us better explanation of the policy? I don't want to just come in here next week or next month and say, okay, the policy looks good and go forward. Are we looking to really making some adjustments to that? Is that, is that kind of your request?
Possibly, but mainly, you know, answer, answer questions, and if any misogyny needs to be done, then make that as a recommendation.
Okay. And you're going to be providing the questions to answer, to give them some direction of what they're, what you're looking, or what we need to be able to do something different? Okay. I just want to make, I didn't want them to walk away and say, okay, well, I don't know what direction we need to go, or what things we're not answering, or specific questions we need to provide to them. I think that'll give them some guidance then. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know where to find him. We'll be all right.
That's all right. How about let's go to 6.03 bids for tennis complex scoreboards? Any questions or comments, or do you need to say anything?
I was just going to share that really these scoreboards were not a part of the original construction work bid package. I used all three words there. And so it's just been brought to it separate. Does that make sense? You proved everything already. This is just finishing it off, and so it had to be brought separately to you for the scoreboards.
Motion?
I would move to accept a bid of the tennis complex scoreboards as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shear, seconded by Brent McCune. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right, 6.04 Cisco Network, Network Hardware Bid.
I think just for some explanation, and if you have any questions, I'd like to bring Rita to the microphone, really for 6.4, 5, 6, and 7. So if you would mind addressing those collectively, or if you have questions, and she'd be glad to answer those.
So we're looking at the Cisco hardware, the Technology Service and Maintenance Agreement, the laptop bid, and the Apple Computer Bid.
So Rita, start just very briefly with, when we talk about our system hardware being replaced, what are we looking at in terms of refreshing?
This bid that you have in front of you tonight is primarily switches and the peripherals around the switches. If you think of what's behind the wall and what's behind the scenes that actually runs this network, every computer that you have that you're sitting in front of you there is plugged into something in the wall. And that plug goes back to a switch that then tells your computer where you're going to get that information from, where it's going to go, and does all of the magic little things it does in the background. A typical Cisco switch that we purchase is a 48-port switch, so think of every 48 of those plugs that you're plugging into, there has to be a switch back there somewhere that runs all this behind the scenes. So as you can imagine, in a district our size, we now should be up to about 23,000-plus devices, laptops, desktop, iPads now, on our network. All of that has to be connected somehow. So when we talk about hardware, network hardware, that's what we're talking about, is those kinds of things behind the scenes that you, as the end user, or our staff as the end user, or our students really never see, but they are critical to making everything work. Does that answer the question?
And Rita, just from a refresh standpoint, again, so technology and hardware doesn't last forever.
No.
What is kind of like a refresh cycle? What do you look at? How long typically can we expect some of these switches and things like that to last?
We've got switches in this bid that are nine to 10 years old, so they're, they're in need. They're not going to take the latest and greatest software upgrades that, every, every one of those has also software on it that's making that hardware run. So as we're talking about security, it's important to keep those things up to date so that the security pieces of that can also be kept up to date. We like to refresh our switches on a five-year replacement cycle. Some more critical and heavily used ones maybe get refreshed a little bit sooner, and some obviously longer.
How about the maintenance agreements? Any questions on that?
I'm sorry?
The maintenance agreement, 6.05.
Quick question there on the Cronos, I just happened to notice that. Is that something that's ongoing? We're going to keep it, or with all the new information system we've got, will we, that eventually be blended in?
Well, we have been discussing the time and attendance system. It is one of the last pieces of software that's still residing on the I-series, that's still located here in this building. It will take some research and some study by lots of people, Dr. Hudson, and Teresa Sudewith up in Employee Services, to make the decision as to whether we stay on that platform and leave it sitting right there on the box that it's on. It can sit there for a little bit longer. But at some point, it's, it's 10 years old now almost, and so you're going to have to be looking at, do we refresh that hardware and that software, or do we look at something else for our time and attendance system? It's in the conversation. There's been no decision.
Just to comment on that, 10 years ago, I was here, and I remember distinctly when, how that was implemented, and it was a disaster.
It was a beast, yes.
And it took forever, and it cost more money than what they told us it was going to cost us. And at the end of the day, I don't think we got what we paid for. So if we're going to work with Cronos on this, we have to make sure that we nail it down what they're going to do and how soon they're going to do it, and how much they're going to charge us.
I would not disagree with that.
Thank you. I had some questions that don't relate to this at all, but I think this is a good time to introduce it because it relates to our technology, and it was an email, long email that I received from a parent, and I forwarded it, copied it to you. And for the benefit of our public, and I think some of our parents must be feeling these same frustrations as this parent was feeling, so could you just talk a little bit about their frustration was with all of, when they come home, and they're very computer savvy, they have all of these different sites, they have to go to different websites, different downloads, different things that they need to utilize, and some they can download and some they can't download. And we're talking about Moodle and ParentView and all of that stuff. And could you just talk a little bit about that, what we're doing to answer the problems and the questions that these parents raised?
Well, you know, we're not, we're not completely implemented with our new synergy package, but we're very close. We're getting there. That did introduce a lot of new sites and applications for our parents and our students. They now have a website, they can go check things, or they can download it to their iPad, their iPhone, their Android device. So you're right, that it does introduce another layer there of where I go and get things. Moodle is more of a content management system. It's a, it's a curriculum management tool that is used in the classroom. Teachers love it, students love it. It's probably not going to go away, another one of those types of things. It's also used at Modo. Both of those are free to us as a school district, and so teachers and staff are going to continue to use those types of things. I can't stand up here and tell you that we're going to have a one-size-fits-all, and there's only going to be one thing that parents are going to go to. Just like you as consumers and you're out there on the internet, you're probably, you know, going to lots of different sites to find information, to buy something, to do all kinds of things. So I really can't answer the question, will we ever find one thing where parents won't have to have all these different things? I don't think we will at this point in the game.
As I read that, though, they were just looking for some assistance, and not them specifically, because, as you said, they're pretty tech savvy. But I thought I picked up in there, they said, could we have, for some parents, a cheat sheet, a description of instructions, a how to interpret this, or, you know, some specifics. And I think we can work on that language and help our parents with that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just like in my work, anytime they introduce something new, they give me a path to how to get to it.
Yeah, kind of a little quick reference guide. That was some of the things that we've been developing a lot with the new synergy applications for students and parents and staff, and just a little one or two-page cheat sheet that they can quickly view on any device that they have that just kind of leads them through the quick steps. We can certainly work on kind of tying all of that together into some kind of document or website that we can post out there for parents to go through. We certainly can work on that.
Thank you. Any more questions in maintenance agreements, laptops, Apple computer bid?
Well, I just, I want to appreciate the fact that you're getting up here because we're about ready to, to vote on over almost close $6, $7 million worth of technology.
Absolutely.
And, and so just appreciate the fact that you, you have an opportunity to talk through some of this and that we have a chance to look at this. The, the maintenance, to your point, looking at these maintenance agreements, how many different pieces of software that we have that, that are out there? Can you just kind of talk through briefly, how do we track? How do we make sure that we are utilizing some of this? Or do we look at the usage of all of these? Do we look at some of these and say, okay, we don't need them anymore? And so just kind of talk us and walk us through that a little bit?
There probably isn't a month goes by that I don't refer back to this document and see where we are as far as usage and what we need. Do we need to increase? Do we need to decrease? Do we need to change? More and more software vendors are presenting their applications as a subscription service. So you will see a lot of that in here. You'll see some things where, gosh, it looks like the original cost of that was only $5 or $6, but now we're paying $1,000 or $2,000 a year to keep it up. Well, that's really because that is a subscription. Unless you subscribe, you're not going to be able to use it. So you'll see a lot of that in here. A lot of what you see in here is also tied to our curriculum. So it, it may be type-to-learn, which is a curriculum that's used in our computer language or computer labs for elementary students to learn typing skills. So there's a lot of these things in here that are also curriculum-based. And there's a lot of things in here that are also maintaining our hardware, maintaining that backend stuff. And some things that have dropped. If you look back historically over these reports in the last four or five years, you'll see some things that have fallen off of here, some things that have added on. A perfect example of something we did back in June when you approved the lease for the iPads. We decided not to purchase Apple Care Plus with those. That was the, that was the maintenance on those that says if somebody drops one and breaks it, we're going to fix it for you. But by the way, we're going to charge you $79 to do that, to carry that warranty. We decided to opt out of that. We're going to self-insure. So I look at these, all of my staff looks at these constantly to make sure that we need them and they're going to protect us in the way that we need.
I just, looking through the list, my favorite is SchoolDude.
SchoolDude is a wonderful product. I don't know, Tom Willis is still here. His, his office is actually the one that uses that. That's managing your facility rental, heavily used. That's managing their work orders. And I believe that's also managing HVAC maintenance.
Well, you're good, you're good.
Scheduling of HVAC timers and controls and things like that. Love SchoolDude.
Well, can you touch, just on the last two, it gets again, the laptop bid, again, is about $2.7 million bid. Just kind of talk us through that again, what we're doing, what we're actually working with that.
Part of this laptop bid, about 1,000 of these, are to start us down the path with the staff mobile initiative. And I briefly explained it in the report, but let me talk to it a little bit more. We're probably one of the last school districts in a large area that does not provide their staff with a mobile device that they can take from their classroom to meetings to home or wherever they go to work. So we are starting down the path to change out the tower, that tower that's under your desk, that computer down there with a laptop device. And so what will happen is we will leave the monitor that the teachers currently have, we'll leave their keyboard and their mouse because some of them are very attached to that keyboard and mouse and they're fearful of getting, of somebody taking that away. We'll leave all that for them. We'll bring them a laptop. We'll take their desktop computer away and they'll have a docking station. They'll come into their classroom in the morning. They'll put their laptop on that docking station. They'll work from their monitor and their keyboard, just like they always have. Their projection system will run from that laptop. They could choose to leave that there and never take it off that docking station, but if they, a lot of our teachers share classrooms now, so they may be in this classroom two hours and go to the next classroom, and then they may have plan, they may have some meetings, so they can take that laptop with them. They can take it to meetings, to home, wherever they need to go. So part of this bid is to start that process. There's a lot of logistics to that, a lot of work on my staff because some of the towers that we're going to start replacing are not due for replacement yet. So they're going to be pulled out of those classrooms and they're going to be moved into areas of the district where those computers are ready for replacement. So we're going to kind of cycle these through. So a lot of logistics with this, but that's part of that bid. Yes.
Well, that brings me back to the security question. So my laptop gets stolen.
We have for many, many years instructed staff and they're pretty diligent about, they don't say any,
Pretty diligent.
Pretty, I, I can't, I can never say 100%. Would never tell you that. But they're, they, they don't have a lot of storage space on these devices. So their storage is on our network where it is more secure.
So they can hook up to the network then, so they don't, they don't store a lot of data?
They don't store a lot. They should not store a lot of data on the hard drive.
Do we have a system where we're checking that to see that they're not storing a lot of data on those laptops?
We don't, we don't go out and look at every one of the 14,000 devices out there to see what's on that hard drive. But I guarantee you, the first time they have trouble, they have a virus and we come in and reimage that machine, anything that's on that hard drive is gone. So they, they, they don't, we really don't have too many people, too many issues with people storing things on the hard drive because that's, that's one of the things that we do. When we get a work order from the help desk, somebody says, you know, my machine's just acting funny. My mouse is jumping all over, or I can't get to something. We'll go out and look. If it's got a virus, we reimage that machine immediately, which wipes the hard drive clean, puts a fresh image on it.
So in order to get to, get to the data, wherever it's stored, I have to have a password to get into that data?
Absolutely.
And that's a secure password?
It is.
Reason I, I, you know, I, you know, everybody kept pretty much, I just came from a conference. And I mean, that was the title of the whole conference was data security, and we put stuff off, off just so we can make sure we can, customers' data can be secured. So I think we all should be very sensitive to that because we see, we hear what happens out there to some of the other retailers and data gets compromised and, boy, we just can't have that happen.
None of our student data, none of our financial data, none of our, our district data is stored on a personal computer.
Do we make teachers change their password periodically?
Every 90 days.
All right.
Every 90 days.
So Dr. Berry, you have to change your password every 90 days?
We have to work with him sometimes, make sure he remembers.
But it's so important, I mean,
It is. It's very important.
Okay.
And, you know, it, it sometimes is a point of frustration from staff. They, they, well, why do I have to do this? I, I just did this. Why do I have to do it again? We just don't back off of it. It's, it's just a requirement. It's, they have to do it.
Is any of that data able to be downloaded to a flash drive?
If you have the security rights to the data,
Okay.
then the answer to that is yes.
Okay.
But you would have to be at a security level where you would have access to. Let's, let's take for example if it's employee data. Very few people in the district, HR staff, payroll staff, a few in business and finance, not even all of John's staff has access to employee data. So you'd have to be in a position, in a job, where your responsibility and your job duties required you to have access to employee data, for example.
And that probably would be enough data that wouldn't fit on a flash drive anyway.
Not unless you parsed it out, if you parsed it out.
And then Rita, the laptop bid, what funding source?
The laptop bid, I believe, is capital outlay. It is?
Is it?
And then I can speak very briefly to the Apple bid. That's a little bit smaller bid. That's actually to replace the hardware that's in the digital photography lab at Alathan North. When we moved the ninth graders up to the high schools, we added a digital photography lab at each one of our four high schools. Alathan North chose not to add the lab that the other three schools added. They added a PC-based lab for digital photography. It, it's really best working lab in the Mac world. And so those computers that are currently in that lab will be taken out of that lab and reused in other places in the district. So this is to replace that PC lab to a Mac lab for digital photography. Plus, that program has grown. Alathan North's population has grown, so we're, we're really needing to get about seven more computers in that lab anyway. So this will increase those, those computers in there so they can get more students in those classes.
And that also is capital outlay?
It is.
Whereas we're looking at the Cisco hardware bid is the bond 2013?
It is. Remember, that was part of the bond initiative to refresh our infrastructure. Yes.
One more question, and I don't mean to belittle this, but it's so important. So I'm log, I'm a teacher. I'm logged on to the district website and doing work, and I walk away from my laptop and I'm at Starbucks. And somebody picks up my computer and walks out.
Well, the, depending, depending on what they're logged into, let's say they were logged into their gradebook. That times out in about 60 minutes, so there is a timeout feature on those. Would I like it to be shorter? I probably would prefer it to be a little bit shorter. But it, it is a, it is kind of a work issue where, you know, they're, they're in the classroom and they're, they're taking attendance first thing and, you know, they get busy doing some things and maybe they need to go back at the end of the hour and, and put some scores in for the, for the students. And so they, they really prefer that to stay logged in for them. So it will, it will timeout and it will log them out, and then somebody would have to have that username and password to get back into that.
Okay, are we ready to, how about we combine the 6.04 for the hardware, 6.05 for technology service and maintenance agreements, 6.06 laptop bid, and 6.07 for the Apple computer bid? I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve action items 6.04 through 6.07.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Dr. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay, 6.08 Service Center Vehicle Equipment bids. Any discussion or questions? Motion?
I move to accept the low bids received from Shawnee Mission Ford for the 4x4 Super Duty trucks and from Alatha Ford for Ford F-650 cab chassis as presented.
Just want to clarify on the bid tab for the Ford F-650. Okay, shows us two. I just want to, I read all the wording, it's one, so I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Shear, seconded by Mr. Poland. Roll, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right, 7.01, we're, we're close to the end. Nobody needs a comfort break or, let's keep moving. 7.01 Curriculum, High School Web and Digital Design.
I move to approve high school web and digital design curriculum as presented.
Second.
Who, Mr. McCune, was that you? Okay, I have a motion by Harlan Parker, seconded by Brent McCune. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Okay, 7.02, we dealt with earlier, so we'll move on to 7.03, the local option budget election. Did you want to make comments?
I'd like to have John make just a few comments leading up to this, please. As the board will recall, you took action in this past budget adoption to move the local option budget from 31% to 33% because the state legislature gave you that power and authority for one year. To keep it at that 33%, the, the law called for a mail-in ballot for the following year and there, to put that in place permanently. The county has worked with school districts and, and we have an election of January 27th. There'll be several Johnson County districts out for their mail-in ballot. If the board adopts this this evening, we will begin the process of educating our public. As you know, we can't tell them how to vote, but we can certainly educate them about this issue. And ballots will begin to be mailed January 7th and culminate in a count on the 27th.
Any questions?
There's a lot, a lot on the voters' plates coming up in November. When do you anticipate rolling this out for?
The, the approach we were going to do is work in turn, kind of the opposite of what we did last time, work internally with staff until we get past those election times, then really hit the community groups right after the election in November, November, December, and then that first week of January. Obviously, we might go to a couple key community groups beforehand, but we don't want to confuse that message as they are inundated with other election information. Maggie in the Communications Department, though, does have a webpage that'll be ready to launch and information is available tomorrow if this passes to, to be ready for people to find that.
Motion?
I would move to approve 7.03, the resolution calling for the mail ballot election, asking voters to permanently establish the board's local option budget. The LOB authority at 33% of the district's state financial aid is presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. McCune, seconded by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, the Royals game has officially started, by the way, so we're sensitive to that. We've got a nice list of the future action items, 8.01 through 8.06. Any dialogue about that? Questions while we're here? Got some nice trips coming up. Okay, we also received written information. We, we received the August 2014 Head Start Monthly Director's Report. Kim does a great job there. 9.02 Student Health Services Annual Report. Cindy, that was fascinating.
Madam President, I just have some comments that I would like to make about 9.02, and I'd like to ask our Director of Nursing, Ms. Gail Moore, to come to the podium, and I just, I just want the public to understand and know everything that goes into our Health Department. The report, first of all, is awesome.
Yes.
This, a lot of work and a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of creativity has gone into this report, and I think it's important for our public to understand that. And do you have a copy of this? Probably know it by heart. And I just, just had a couple of comments that I want, and a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Just, it's really important for, for our parents and our, our community to understand this. On page six, Student Health Emergency Fund Usage and Donations. Notice that the usage in 2014, it increased in both students and dollars spent. 14, 140, 145 students assisted in $14,000 in donations and used 14,000. Can you talk a little bit about what that's for and why that's there?
Sure.
When you need it and?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, for recognizing the report. It is a lot of work, but I think it's very important to provide this data about, both back to our department, but also to our public. As you heard earlier tonight, our poverty rate is about 28%. Of our students, our homeless student numbers are increasing. And so quite often, the school nurse is the first one that knows that there is a urgent health need with this child. Some of those children have no health insurance. And so this fund, that's one way it's utilized, that they need to be seen. We feel they need to be seen that day so that we can try to treat what's wrong and get them right back to school. And so we have a wonderful partnership with Alathan Medical Center that makes that possible to have a reduced-cost visit at urgent care. We have a pharmacy in town that we can let know if students coming. And the prescription has filled them because quite often when they go to that urgent care, then there's a pharmaceutical cost as well. Same thing, we might have a child that takes medication and all of a sudden they forgot to re-enroll in their Medicaid or KAN care. So now this month, there's no money for medication until we get that re-enrollment done, and we'll provide a month's medication. We'll help students with eyeglasses, so any health-related need that might help with a barrier to learning. We do limit that we will help a student up to $300 per year so that we can help the most students possible. And it's meant to be a short-term thing while we help them find long-term solutions for their health needs. And so all of the money that's utilized, it's no public education dollars. It's all donated funds that come into that account. And that was started many, many years ago by Peggy Baron, who once was in my shoes as the Coordinator of Health Services for this district. So it was her, it was her idea to do this. We were a little bit concerned a few years ago when we were spending more, we had more needs and income we were bringing in. So with some wonderful partnership with Alathan Public Schools Foundation, where our employees, through the public foundation, through United Way Campaign, can make a donation to the foundation and can target what they'd like it utilized for as part of the United Way Campaign. and can target what they'd like it utilized for as part of the United Way Campaign, that's really helped grow. We also have some funders that just like to donate to us every year, and so we take that. We have employees that donate in memory of someone who just passed away. And so we will, we will take a donation in any form.
And notice there's an advisory council that oversees that.
There is an advisory council, and they meet a minimum of once a year, so that we're accountable to that council of how we have utilized the funds that year.
And some accountability on that then as well. Also notice that, page one, three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty-three visits. If you divide that by twenty-nine thousand kids, that's ten visits per kid, per year. Busy, busy people. Page seven, page seven is the dental initiatives. And like you, you're saddened by the news that Miles of Smiles, which is a reach, the Reach Grant, which provides five services for dental care, five of our Title I schools, has been, will be discontinued at the end of this year.
It actually was last year, so it's no longer in effect, because they lost their funding. And so this was a partnership with UMKC School of Dental Hygienist. So it served as a practicum for those dental hygienist students. But unfun, you know, unfortunately, they lost their funding. But fortunately, which you had noticed in the report, with our federally qualified health clinic here in town, the Health Partnership Clinic, they've been able to pick up that slack. And so the wonderful thing, they were already working in, in partnership with the Miles of Smiles program, because one thing the Miles of Smiles program did not have was an actual dentist that came along for the restorative care, to fill the cavity. And Health Partnership Clinic has hired an additional pediatric dentist. And so they actually were at all ten of our Title I elementary schools on enrollment, to, to see if the parents wanted their children to participate in this program, write an enrollment in July. And so they started early in the school year, providing services, and they will be at all of the Title I elementary schools, plus a few more schools, including some of our middle schools.
That's Johnson, Johnson County Health Partnership, correct?
Their new name is Health Partnership Clinic, so they have dropped the Johnson County when they became federally funded.
Okay, good deal. And then just one more comment, again, as it relates to the Health Partnership, I noticed that we signed an agreement with them in June, because we had, they, they are providing nurses at two of our Title I schools.
They are. They're, they are, they hired the nurses, kind of in, in collaboration with us. We did kind of joint interviewing. We interviewed, then we sent nurses to them to interview. We are reimbursing them about half, half of the salary. So in other words, we were able to replace two nurses for kind of the price of one. We're offering additional services. So what we're getting ready to do now at those schools is ask parents if they'd like their children to receive the flu shot at school, and even the parents can come too. And some of the children that are missing some of the recommended vaccinations and school vaccinations, trying to do that as well. And so we plan to continue to offer additional services, like physicals for students that are lacking their school-required physical, in that partnership.
Okay. And I just, I just want to say another shout-out to you, is as in past years, the Department of Health Services deeply appreciative of the support provided by the Olathe School Boards of Education. Thank you for that. Nice comment on our behalf. And thank you for all the great work that the Health Services Department does. And example of a great partnership is the one with the Health Partnership, where we were, lost two nurses' retirement, but we were able to replace them with one. And that probably helped us get another classroom teacher, correct, Dr. Berry? At, at the end of the day. Okay, so, so thank you for that good work on that.
Thank you for your support.
Collaboration and partnership with, with another entity in the community. We, we like to hear that, and the community likes to hear that as well, that we're working in that, in that, in that kind of a cooperative spirit. Thank you.
You are right that we are richly blessed to have Cindy a part of our team. She's a jewel in our crown. So thank you, Cindy, very much. How about 9.03, weighted grades courses? That's in the written information.
Mike and I had the opportunity to visit with Dr. Banikowski and Luanne Hermrich earlier in the week, and go over this information. And I think there's a, a good plan for new courses that are being added, and a, and a more efficient, accurate way that doesn't look like great inflation for calculating weighted courses. So I feel like we have a good plan in place.
Good.
And it will be communicated to teachers. And my question was, parents who have older children may be startled at a new formula, but I think there's plenty of opportunity to educate them. And, and we will be, our new formula will be more like others in the neighboring districts, so it will look familiar.
Good, good. Thank you. All right, moving on to topics for discussion. This is a time for board members to discuss or bring up topics that they'd like to speak about. Anybody? All right. Superintendent comments?
Just a few tonight. I'll stay on the technology theme a little bit, to let you know that the iPad rollout has continued to go very well. And that is thanks to the Technology Department, to our principals, and the buildings, and the staff. The staff has gone through three-hour training, after hours, to, to get ready for that. A lot of extra time spent by technology staff, but a lot of excitement in the classroom for the rollout. And that deployment, I believe, finishes up this coming Thursday, the, of next week, that, that all elementary schools will have the iPads. We had to kind of roll it out, the staff could get to that. But really exciting, I think. Second thing I want to mention is, you know, that we've always participated in a benchmarking consortium, so that we can be with school districts our size, and compare, and contrast, and, and learn. And so in the month of October, we'll be meeting with those benchmarking schools again. Just as a quick reminder, Keller, Texas, Deer Valley, Arizona, Millard, Nebraska, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Naperville, Illinois, Williamson County, Tennessee, Edmond, Oklahoma, and Francis Howell, that's in St. Louis, Missouri. One thing that we're doing different to be efficient on this conference is we're doing the flipped instruction. Some of the sharing that we have done in the past, once we get there, we are sharing upfront, so that we have that done before we get there, and can be more efficient in our groups that way. Want to also mention very quickly, I was part of a small group this morning, working on the accreditation model, or discussing it for the state of Kansas. And I just want to keep that in the forefront for you at all times. That, there's a lot going on in our state right now. And at the very top of it, we obviously still don't have a commissioner. That search is progressing, and the State Board is handling that, that. But there's still a question, obviously, about curriculum issues, the accreditation model, testing, and so forth. And so the, the good news I want to share out is that there seems to be some interest at the State Department to say accreditation of schools is not going to boil down to a single test score, which I think is, we're glad that's going to cycle back, that there will be some other elements that will be brought in to say, you know what, there's lots of things you do in, in other, other areas that are relevant, and are rigorous, and have relationships, and so forth. And that's kind of the path they're headed down. Want to mention then, in terms of what's going on at the state level, and the KASB is having education summits across the state. And the next one is October ninth in the Shawnee Mission area, and we're taking a team of fifteen or more, including four board members, some staff members, and quite a few patrons. They're going to go and discuss statewide issues for that time during the day. So again, I'm very pleased with that, and I thank you for your time. Last thing I'll mention, and not to call attention, to embarrass him, but we have people come and go in a district, and I believe that, you know, yes, everybody's replaceable, but we have tonight on the HR report, someone who's going to leave a great hole in this district, and that's Dr. Lloyd Letcher, has served this district, and provided leadership for classified HR for a number of years, and done an outstanding job. He is truly, actually a legend among staff members who retire, that he is so good in, in explaining things to people. But just a tireless worker, and just a great guy overall. And we, we don't lose him till the end of this school year, but it was in your packet tonight, that he has announced his retirement. For some reason, wants to go to the little cabin in Vermont and be with his family, so we understand that. But again, we, we appreciate everything that Lloyd has done, and we'll say goodbye appropriately later. That's all I have.
Thank you. I was very sad to see of the resignation. We will miss you, but I'm glad you're here for the rest of the year. Okay, we need an executive session. How long did, do you think?
Depends how many minutes that you're planning in, but from what you originally said, we're, we're going to need an hour, I'm afraid.
Okay, okay. So let's just say nine-twenty. I would take a motion.
I would.
The board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to discuss matters relating to employer employee negotiations, and consultation with an attorney, to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, and that the board return to the regular meeting at nine-twenty. In this room, the executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position, and the public interest.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Poland, seconded by Mr. Shear. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
I think I just stuck those there, so I wouldn't forget to have you sign those.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the negotiated agreement as presented.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Mr. Poland, and a second from Mr. Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, and we're adjourned. Or do I need a motion?